Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Carver Planning Board Meeting of Tuesday, September 26th. We call the meeting to order at 7:06 PM. If we would all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is, by the way, the Massachusetts flag there.
I, I-
I got, you know-
I was thrown off because I-
People-
That's, that's normally-
I think you did that so that-
I'm just saying.
There's a voice card you gotta put in the right place.
All right, our first order of business is a public hearing continued on the application of Weathervein at Silver Street LLC requesting a special permit and site plan review pursuant to sections 3100, 3900, and 5300 of the Carver zoning bylaw located at 7 and 9 Silver Street in Carver, Mass. Assessors map 67s, lots 4-3, and 4F in the Residential Agricultural Zoning District. The proposed scope includes construction of six new triplex residential townhouses consisting of 18 total units. And we have a request for continuance by the applicant. So we will, the board will accept a motion to continue the public hearing for Weathervein until October 10th at 7:00 PM?
11:14.
Oh, they're, they want 11:14?
Yeah, they're, they're still in the midst of doing the technical review of replying to Andy's comments.
Okay.
So they're, that's why they're not here because they're still working on that.
Excellent.
So 11:14, 23 is the date they've requested.
The Chair will accept a motion to continue the public hearing on Weathervein to November 14th, 2023, 7:00 PM, Meeting Room 1, Carver Town Hall.
Why don't we allow Mr. Williams this honor? This is his very first act.
I will make that motion then.
Motion made by Mr. Williams, seconded by Ms. Sordillo. Do we have any further discussion?
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sordillo says aye.
Don Lamb says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. All right. Our next one was supposed to be a public hearing on the application of the Barker House, requesting a special permit pursuant to section 5300 of the Carver zoning bylaw located at 60 Plymouth Street in Carver, Mass. for a dog daycare boarding grooming and training in a residential agricultural district. A request by the applicant to withdraw the application without prejudice has been made to the board. The board will accept a motion to approve the withdrawal of the application without prejudice.
I'll make that said motion.
Motion made by Mr. Robinson.
Okay, I'll second that.
Seconded by Ms. Sordillo. Do we have further discussion?
I'll be happy to just lay out why.
Um, sure, yes.
So, uh, seconded by Ellen?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, so the applicants were looking to purchase this piece of property contingent on their permits. Uh, the property owner decided to go with another offer that wasn't contingent. So the property they hoped to put their dog daycare in is not available to them anymore, hence the withdrawal. Now, if someone makes an application, let's say they made this application, the property owner let them know before we advertised that it was, that they weren't going to get the property, then the application would simply be withdrawn. But under chapter 48, section 16, if it's been advertised, only the planning board can vote to accept the withdrawal of an application, as you just made a motion and a second for it.
Further discussion? Seeing none.
Mr. Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sordillo says aye.
Don Lamb says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. All right. Our next order of business is a public hearing on the application of-
Priolo.
Priolo. I just wanted to make sure I got that right. Concrete Forms Inc. requesting a special permit and site plan review pursuant to sections 2270, 4341, 5300, 3100, and 3351 of the Carver zoning bylaw located at 93 North Main Street in Carver, Mass. Assessors map 18, lots 22A-R and 22C-R in the Village Business Zoning District. The project consists of the construction of a mixed-use building, associated utilities, stormwater controls, parking lots, and access drives. The building will be used as a craftsman tradesman building and have a four two-bedroom residential units above. At the request of the applicant, we will continue the hearing without any testimony.
Until October 10th.
Until October 10th, 2023, 7:00 PM, Meeting Room Number 1, Carver Town Hall. The Chair will accept a motion to continue the public hearing until the date as stated.
I will make that said motion.
Motion made by Mr. Robinson? Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Ms. Sordillo. Further discussion? Seeing none.
Mr. Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sordillo says aye.
Mr. Williams says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you for your time tonight.
This is like Congress. You gotta go by seniority. I'm the little man.
No, you're not the little man.
You wanna pace yourself, Dawn. You don't wanna go all out the first night. You don't wanna pull a hammy.
Oh, boy.
Our next order of business is other business. Request for extension for site plan review and special permit, Ward Street Carver Solar 1 LLC, 19C Ward Street, Assessors Map 120, Lot 6-1 in a residential agricultural district. Uh, do we have an applicant here?
We do not.
We do not.
So I'll be happy to read from their letter that they provided.
Sure.
So July 17th, letter from Sullivan in Worcester LLP, Council for 19 Ward Street. Calls for project delay. Uh, the fundamental reason why the project is not ready to proceed to construction and the reason for the extension request is due to the interconnection process with Eversource Energy. Under the current regulatory regime applicable to this project, the project proponent needs, A, obtain all federal, state, and local approvals, two, obtain a statement of qualifications under the Solar Massachusetts Renewable Target Smart Program, and three, obtain an Interconnection Service Agreement, ISA, with the electric company providing services to the vicinity of the project. There are some interrelationships amongst these requirements that are relevant. For example, a project proponent cannot obtain an SOQ, that is, the Statement of Qualifications, until all discretionary approvals are granted and an ISA has been finalized. With respect to this project, there have been extensive overruns in the interconnection process compared to the typical timeframes. It goes on to state a number of different things, but this has been a problem or certainly an issue for most of the solar projects. As you know, Eversource sort of put a pause on everything as they work through their regional upgrade plans. And so this has sort of put the, uh, the brakes on all those solar projects that are coming along that require connections to Eversource.
All right. When, when did their special permit and site plan review expire?
I don't have that information in front of me.
If they're asking for March 25, 25, would it be March 24, maybe?
Typically.
Of 2023?
Well, no, because March 23 is set and done, so I'm assuming it's 2024.
Right, that's why I gotta ask.
Yeah. I'm assuming they're asking for something that's, can we just double check on that, please?
I'm working on it now.
Opponent sponsors are operating under a new name, New Leaf Energy.
And is this one of the situations where we've changed this to two years opposed to one?
No, because this was already in existence.
Yeah, this, so this was 2017, this decision. And I'm, I just grabbed the first one that came up on the, on the screen here. So at this point-
Yeah, it is 2017, it's two years.
Yeah, so this is a 2017 decision. I have to assume that there's been another decision in there, or at least an extension, but I don't have that, that information right here in front of me. I don't know.
This was a 2017?
Well, except, uh, this file says PB Decision 2, Version 3, uh, which is, you know, this, uh, because I'm just pulling things off the, off my files, but I don't have the sort of paper file here that's got the particulars.
That's okay.
But if it was 17, COVID impacted it.
That's, that's over because-
Right.
So that wouldn't have been-
But that would went to 2022, therefore 23.
It, it has more to do with the interconnection study being done by Eversource. Do we have any idea when Eversource is looking to complete that study?
I, I'm under the impression that, uh, that they may have. Uh, I'll put a note to go take a look, but I know it's been held up for a bit as they went through this process because there's six of them they're doing, uh, different regions of Southeastern Massachusetts.
The news tonight, our governor just appointed a new committee to speed up the process of permitting solar and so forth, and they'll be putting out the report in the spring. So even to get the process, to get them quicker, it's gonna take until the spring, have the state figure out how to make them quicker. So I don't know how quick that is.
This is maybe going on for six years now, so the Chair will accept a motion to continue the site plan review and special permit for, uh, Ward Street Carver Solar 1 LLC, 19C Ward Street until October 1st of 2024.
I'll make said motion.
Motion made by Ms. Sordillo.
So that's a year, you know, basically giving them a year.
Well, if this has been going on for six years already, I think they can always come back and ask for another extension.
Yeah, I mean, if it's, you know, red tape beyond their control when-
Right, understandable.
When you have the time.
Yeah. Do I have a second?
I'll second it then.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
It's not their fault.
Here you go.
For any discussion? Uh, seeing none. Mr. Robinson.
Mr. Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sordillo says aye.
Don Lamb says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. All right. All right. Mr. Bott, uh, we have a chapter 61A right of first refusal?
We do. So in your packet.
I didn't get a copy of Ms. Hewings' email.
I think if you look in the packet in your books, uh, it's attached to the front page of that along with the document in the mass.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Ms. Hewings states, "Hello all. The land being offered to us here was formerly Clark Griffith's land, and then was the Weston Brothers. It's definitely near or directly abutting land that belongs now to the Wildlands Trust on Lakeview Street and/or Indian Street. It is worth protecting, in my opinion, for conservation purposes. It also abuts a Wildlands Trust parcel directly across the street from Sampson's Pond. I respectfully ask that you consider these facts when you make your deliberations as to whether the town should purchase these lots, perhaps with CPC money. Many thanks, Sarah." This isn't, this isn't a residential, this is a residential agricultural zone property?
Uh, that is correct.
It is further identified as, uh, through the TDRs as-
Yeah, so in my memorandum that I put together this afternoon, I was working through these things. So, this is an RA zone property. It's shown in a TDR sending area. It was recently the subject of an A&R plan, uh, creating three lots from two. As A&R lots, three houses will likely be built on site with a conventional septic system approximately 166 feet from one of the lot corners for Indian Brook. The prospective purchaser, KNG developer, has built previous housing in Carver. Uh, the property itself now is largely cleared and graded flat, and I'm guessing that's anticipation of the construction of three likely single-family houses. Uh, this property, in my opinion, has potential for conservation or for development as a park or perhaps affordable housing through a town-sponsored local initiative program, as mentioned in the Carver Master Plan, and identified as a high priority in the Carver Master Plan. Your packet includes the email from Ms. Hewings, who stated, as Chairman just did. Uh, at this point, uh, no purposes have been identified, but the window for the town to exercise their right of first refusal is 120 days from the receipt of the seller's letter from 9/14/23. Uh, the identified purchase price is $400,000. So at this point, we're not talking about what the town might do with the property. The question is, does the town have an interest in, in exercising their right of first refusal to potentially buy the property for that $400,000 price for some future use? At that point, what that future use would be, would be the discussion of the town. Uh, so Sarah, in her email, had talked about conservation. Uh, in my comments, I had talked about the potential for affordable housing on this site as well. Because if you look at what the property is now and what it's going to be, it's going to be three houses. Because it's an A&R lot, they have franchise, you get a building permit by right. So if we don't exercise our, our 61A, uh, three houses will be built on it at market rate. Uh, and if we do exercise it, uh, and the town opts to purchase it, then the town can decide what they want to do with it, whether it's conservation or recreation, or, as I pointed out in my, uh, my memorandum, the potential for, uh, housing. Now, the town could do an RFP under a LIP program and put 100% of the units as affordable with an, with a, um, nitrogen-reducing septic system and create, instead of three market-rate houses, multiple affordable units with better protection for the resources with nitrogen-reducing septic system. But we're not at that point at all. At this point, we're just talking about, does the town have an interest in exercising that 61A? And that goes to the Select Board to make that decision, but they advise, ask for the advice of the Conservation Commission, the Planning Board, and the Select Board in doing so.
And are we first? Excuse me, I'm sorry.
No, no, please.
Are we the first? Did, has come before us? Or do we have a conservation? I, I do see Mr. Savery Moore in the audience.
Uh, we are second. The assessors have already signed off and said they don't have an interest in it, uh, but their job is to collect money from property that's taxable. So I understand their take on that. Uh, but, uh, conservation, this will come to conservation, I think, at their next meeting?
Possibly. It's October 4th. I don't have the full agenda yet.
Yeah. So, uh, so this will go through those three folks and then go to the Select Board. Uh, and the Select Board will have their discussion about it.
Well, the town has shown a clear interest by approving it as a sending area in regards to its level of importance in the town. So, um-
Hasn't then been the chicken and the egg who goes first? Is, when these properties have come before the Selectmen, it's already been divided and, and plans have been made for it by somebody else, a developer or builder, and the purchase price, that's just his offer. You'd have to go through an assessment or what do you call it?
Yeah, in, in order to, to make that, uh, purchase price-
That may not be the right price.
Yeah, you, we'd have to appraise it. It has to be plus or minus X percent from that. But that all starts with the town saying, yes, we want to exercise our option. And then we go through that due diligence to determine, is that value of the property something that the town can justify paying for?
Right, but the person that owns it has already spent this kind of money to get it to the point of having plans and gone through processes and shouldn't that, I mean, who's the onus on? The town or the person that owns it to put it forward?
The thing about that is, because it was chapter 61A, it, that, that was already decided when the property was put into 61A. This is something that they, they knew about in advance, and, and any money put into this is, is at, at their risk.
Well, that's what I'm trying to figure out, is they go, is the chicken or the egg? You know, they have brought it to see if the town wanted it before they spent their money? Or is there-
Well, it's, it's, it's part of the whole process under 61A before they can sell it to somebody else. So one guy owns it, wants to sell it to somebody else.
Right, and he wants to divide it to get the best price or have the best, he's gonna spend the money to get into three lots instead of one.
Yeah, well, they've already done that. The planning board approved an A&R plan for that. So at this point, you know, the, the, the onus is on the developer. You know, you spend money, you high risk, high reward. Uh, so, you know, they've made this investment in the property, uh, hoping that they'll be able to acquire the property and, and build on it. But because of 61A and because they've gotten a tax break on the property over the years, uh, the town gets the right of first refusal.
Well, the owner gets the tax rate. The buyer starting up fresh.
Uh, so when you sell a 61A property, they have to pay a, a rollback of taxes, I think, over the last five years. So they'd have to make up those five years of taxes, uh, with the sale. Uh, but at this point, um, how the law works under 61A, the town has a right of first refusal. If they don't want it, then developing law is married away.
Now-
I have a question, Mr. Chair. Um, if the town were to acquire, are they forgiven the taxes on it, or are they still pay the taxes on it?
I don't know.
Well, that would be a question I'd like-
Well, they're selling it to the town. Even, we have the right of first refusal, but was the town still buying it? So-
Right, but what I'm asking is-
Would the owner have-
Will they be forgiven because it's 61A as far as the taxes are concerned?
The back taxes be paid by the current owner or the buyer?
Well, I expect it to be, that any taxes would have been rolled into the sales price of the property, so.
Yeah, I don't know.
This is directly abutting the Wildland Trust property that the town purchased last year?
Uh, well, I brought up-
There's a map here.
I, I brought up Google Maps just so we could see where the property's at. So these are those parcels right here, where the cursor's at, south of Lakeview.
And this is the property we just purchased last year for the Wildland Trust, right?
Wildland Trust goes right out to the boat ramp, if you can-
Yes, so the majority of this property here is what we just, uh, approved CPC money for last year for conservation and recreation and transferred over to the Wildland Trust.
Could be. I do not know. That was Sarah's point in her email, that it's near, uh, near that property.
And it's bordering on Indian Brook. And I believe we own a large chunk of a property across the street on Indian Street there, um, that's in Conservation Trust?
Yeah, there's a sliver out. Let's see.
For some reason, I want to say it's 11 acres and 13 acres, but I, I'm probably wrong on the numbers.
So this is our burgeoning online GIS. It's, uh, still needs lots more data in it. So the town owns this piece of property on the north side of Lakeview Street.
That would be the boat dock.
Okay.
It's, uh, it's sort of a long strip. Uh, let's get some aerial photography in here. Yep. The lake shows up better if you, uh, put the, so, yeah, the town owns that property, uh, that strip along, uh, Lakeview Street. And the subject property is-
And then we also own the large-
So here's the subject property here, this-
Yeah.
So this one and this one?
Yeah, because we just split it from two into three.
Yep.
And we also own the two properties just south of that house.
And it doesn't but the brook right there.
I can't read, read the numbers, but it looks like 826J and 826H.
I guess I'm looking for. So there's the picture for the neighborhood there. Uh, so we own this, we believe this was, this property where the cursor's at was purchased by the town and given to Wildland Trust. Is that the property we've been talking about?
I believe that, that's the property and directly across the street from-
Buzzards Bay Coalition owns that, correct?
Yeah. Directly across the street from the proposed properties on Indian Street, there's two large sections of property.
There's a fire station in that somewhere, too?
That's, I think this is a, I think this is another open space parcel over here. Yep, Town of Carver, Zero Indian Street.
And I, I think the one next to it is, might be by the Buzzards Bay, because, uh, the property we transferred to him was two separate properties.
Yep, Buzzards Bay Coalition owns that one.
Yeah.
The one to the northeast of that is the Town of Carver. Those are the two subject parcels here in the town property. Anyhow, if there's-
It's certainly attempting to fill in a necklace or something, a pathway.
But it all starts with, what we're gonna do with it is a future discussion.
Right.
Today's discussion is, should we have a discussion in the future?
It is, it's just our, we're just voting on whether we believe the town has an interest in the property and should purchase it out of chapter 61A. Do we have any further discussion, questions, concerns, comments? And the Chair will accept a motion to, um, accept?
Move to execute our first, uh, right of first refusal?
Move to execute the right of first refusal for Zero Lakeview Street.
You want to make that motion or you want me to?
Yeah.
I'll make that said motion.
Motion made by Mr. Robinson?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Seconded by Ms. Sordillo. Do we have further discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Robinson.
Mr. Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sordillo says aye.
Don Lamb says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye.
All right.
I see Mr. Bott has provided us with, ooh, a colored version of the Operating Procedures for Carver Planning Board. Um, at a future meeting that has, is not, it's possibly will be November 14th, we will be discussing these procedures and policies and seeing if we can help streamline the application process in regards to these. But if-
Yeah, so if I may, so, uh, when the board adopts regulations, subdivision regulations being the classic example, they're required to hold a hearing, advertise in the paper. The board's gonna look at their regulations. Uh, this is a policy, uh, and it's not necessary, it doesn't come to that same level of, of, of requirement, but as a, you know, best management practice, I tend- I tend to advertise those things even though you might not need to. Not that I expect a crowd much larger than this for us to have a conversation after a public hearing about policies and procedures. But that gives us time to, for you folks, to send me some of your ideas that we want to incorporate into those, advertise it for a November hearing. And we won't do this all in one night. We'll bring it up, but we'll block some time off over the next few meetings to look at those sort of things and work through them. I'll give me, you know, ask me questions, give me things you'd like to consider. I'll be happy to do some research and look at some of those things. I lean on, you know, things that I'm familiar with from both Carver and Falmouth and the things that, you know, I've seen. But there are a lot of towns out there that have some really good stuff. A lot of the things in our policy and procedure manual are sort of, well, it's, you know, it's been done over a few different times, but it's mostly about process. And there's some things in there that are perfectly fine. Some things are probably need some tweaking. And just a matter of sort of the board's business plan for how they do business.
All right. We have a future application for October 24th and Litter's Paw requesting a special permit pursuant to Section 5300 of the Carver zoning bylaw at 58 North Main Street in Carver for a dog daycare boarding pet accessory retail store in a general business district. Other than that?
So, we will also have, if I may, on October 10th, we're going to have a request from the folks from Ricketts Pond for an extension of the subdivision, Ricketts Pond Business Park subdivision, as well as a minor modification for 94th Street. 94th Street has been, work's been pretty much done, but they made some changes on the site that sort of bump up against, you know, sometimes there's, you know, a footer here or there, but there's some changes that probably need to come back to the board to take a look at. So, a request for minor modification for 1010 for 94th Street, request for an extension for Ricketts Pond Business Park, and as we just heard moments ago, 93 North Main. So, that'll be the 1010 meeting.
Not to discuss it, but is that currently the doggy daycare we just approved like eight months ago?
No, 94th is the electrician. This was the RDA property, the RDA sold this?
No, Litter Paws.
No, that apparently is something called a Frosty Dog property.
Oh, okay.
I've heard so many things about the Frosty Dog, and I, of course, thought it was that dog truck in your neighborhood, but that's more dogs.
That's more dogs, yes.
So, it's no surprise we have so many doggy daycares because so many people have named so many businesses after so many dogs here in Carver.
That used to be the Sports Complex, and they moved that down the street from where CVS sits now?
I don't think it was that far down, I don't know. I remember, not quite that old in Carver. I remember it was there and they moved it further down the street.
2004, maybe?
Back some time.
So, that's what we're anticipating for 1010?
All right, now, the minutes of 8:22, have we discerned the name of the representative that appeared for the marijuana retail store?
Kevin?
It was blank in the minutes because I don't think she could understand, so I think we need to fill that in.
Yeah, I'm going to fix the last name, but the first name is Kevin. Might be Kevin O'Connell.
And then, I thought we closed the public hearing on that, but the minutes say we didn't.
I think you went to close them, and then you asked some more questions, and then it didn't get closed and you, I don't think it was a vote.
I don't think we need to vote because we voted on the project, and that should have closed the public hearing.
I think I could run by the, I think, started twice, but I don't think anybody actually said yes all the way through or no. Water under the bridge.
Bott an easy seat. All right, so with those edits, the Chair will accept a motion to approve the minutes of August 22nd, 2023?
Who makes said motion?
Motion made by Ms. Sardillo.
I was the associate then, so I don't know if I can make this?
You can.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Then I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Williams. I'm going to give Kevin just a quick second in case he's got anything further to add.
No, this is on the 22nd?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm all set.
All right.
Mr. Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sardillo says aye.
Don Ram says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. The Chair will accept a motion to approve the minutes of September 12th, 2023?
Where is John on this? He's neither present or absent.
He was here, so?
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, we'll have to add him in as?
That would be my question on this.
Yeah.
He's neither absent or present.
And I can't take it.
Mr. Dion too, correct?
Yeah, Mr. Dion's absent.
Okay, yep.
So, it's possible that that was supposed to be John?
Yeah, so we'll add in Mr. Gatsky?
Mr. Chadick's roll call vote and John Gatsky votes aye.
Yes.
Yeah, so at the bottom of Page 2, Chairman takes a roll call vote and John Gatsky?
I see what you're saying.
Votes aye. So, I'm going to go with John was there.
Yeah, so?
No, 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 I'm not saying that John was or wasn't there.
It needs to be fixed in the minutes.
Got it.
Add John Gatsky to line one.
I think we put Don Williams' name in instead.
Correct.
Correct.
All right, with that edit, the Chair will accept a motion to approve?
I'll make that said motion.
Motion made by Mr. Robinson?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Seconded by Ms. Sardillo, Mr. Robinson?
Mr. Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sardillo says aye.
Don Ram says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye.
All right, and just for my edit, who moved, who seconded then?
Mr. Robinson moved and Ms. Sardillo seconded. Have we placed an advertisement for our associate member yet?
We have, in fact, that is on the list of things I want to talk to you about tonight.
Excellent.
I think it was on the town website.
It is. So, we have posted the advertisement, we have gotten one application so far, and the Town Administrator's Office wanted me to confirm that the Planning Board would be available for an October 17th joint meeting with the Planning Board to appoint a joint member.
We would prefer to do it on October 10th as it does affect our?
That was my first ask.
Yeah.
I said, can you do it October 10th? And they went, how's October 17th?
Well, we, I think, you know, considering what we had to go through tonight because we didn't have an alternate member, the sooner the better. If they're available the 10th, we can handle it at the beginning of the meeting and hold a joint meeting and continue from there.
Well, I'll push back and ask about the 10th.
Thank you.
But I do recommend putting the Mullen Rule on the warrant for town meeting next year because that's the sort of thing that makes things go better.
We can't bring it back this year because it was turned down last year.
It's not a zoning bylaw.
Oh, okay, all right.
How bad was it? How bad were the numbers on the Mullen's rule?
I don't know.
Can't remember.
I don't know.
All right, so the Planning Board is looking for an alternate member. This is your opportunity to make a difference for your town, to stand up for your beliefs in the town and to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the individuals of this town. There's no educational or experience requirements in regard to the position, and we would like to see a broad spectrum of people apply for the position. So, we look forward to hearing from you, and we hope you take the time to fill out the application. It's available on the Carver Town website.
It is a very simple application.
Very simple, yes.
No credit check?
No, no, just?
Just?
Who you are?
Who you are, why you want to?
Why you're interested in serving.
Great. All right, so my other ask tonight is just a reminder that we are now scheduled for our much-anticipated CPTC training session on subdivisions and A&R plans for October 19th, Thursday, October 19th. So, our speaker can make it that night after having a couple of setbacks from her availability. So, we've got the fire station reserved, and we're looking forward to hearing from, you know, really a very insightful trainer on this.
Excellent.
So, we're looking at the 10th, 17th, 19th, and 24th?
Maybe the 17th, but 10th is a regularly scheduled meeting, and we're hoping that the Select Board can fit us into their busy schedule for a joint meeting to choose an alternate member. And then, should that not happen, we will have to come up with a different schedule for that. And then we have the 19th?
Correct. So, 19th and the 24th are confirmed?
And the 24th, yeah.
And preferably the 10th for the joint meeting.
Excellent.
And don't we have the, looking at the maps, is that the fourth?
Yeah, that working group is the fourth, and that's, I think, you and Don?
Yep.
Who are on, that's priority development areas and priority protection areas?
Yes.
With the staff from the Southeastern Regional Planning and Economic Development District, which is why we call it SERPID. So, I don't have to say Southeastern Regional Planning and Economic Development District all the time.
And they work closely with us to restructure the TDRs just a year and a half ago, which helped outline some of our priority areas. We also, they also worked with us on the development of the master plan in 2017, which I developed certain other areas. And then we have maybe a conservation map in regards to certain areas that are important to the town in regards to water supply and groundwater and conservation. All right, if there's nothing further, the Chair will accept a motion for adjournment.
I will make said motion for adjournment.
Motion made by Ms. Sardillo?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Robinson. Mr. Williams, thank you very much, and congratulations. Mr. Robinson?
Mr. Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sardillo says aye.
Don Ram says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye. Thank you all very much. Have a good evening, and we hope to hear from you on the application process.